Go ahead and turn on your mics.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Behind you.
I pledge allegiance is applied to the United States of America, to the people of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible.
Thank you. I'll do the roll call tonight. Libby?
Here.
Becky?
Here.
Tanya?
Here.
Ryan?
Here.
Brett's here. I declare we have a quorum. Alrighty. Can I get somebo- uh, somebody to approve the minute? Make a motion?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the three twenty meeting.
I second.
All in favor? Aye. Oppose? The ayes have it. Alrighty, new business, council to consider approving of the two thousand twenty-two redevelopment commission report. So that's how much is in there right now is two point five million? Yeah. That's good. These aren't any kind of alphabet order either. It's just, um.
Our song.
Yeah. Can I get a motion to approve the, um, uh, the redevelopment commission report?
Make a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-two mission redevelopment commission report.
My second.
All in favor? Aye. Oppose? The ayes have it, thank you. Alrighty is. Fortville resident Jeff Ratliff to address the council seeking water service connection to Madison County at eighty-eight oh three west, Old Fort Road.
How are you guys today?
Good.
So coming for you today, obviously asking for, uh, water service. Uh, boy, it's been been quite a process. I don't know how long it typically takes to, uh, to achieve this, but I started this in September of two thousand twenty-two, around the first week, and so I'm still here this day with no answer. Um, so I don't know if that's typical business or if that's just me, but that's the case. So as you guys know, you guys have received a packet, um, and someone has, uh, drawn a map here illustrating where they think the, uh, best way to service the area is. I don't know who came up with that or or how they or how they came to that conclusion. Uh, but I don't know that it it would seem that that would be the best way, but I don't know that many know that that's a private road. Lot of right of way to buy up. Um, we got a question about that right now, whereas at the back of the property, there's an existing easement that we know is suitable for a water line because it housed, um, Helmcrest Waterline for nearly forty years. So I'm just simply asking, uh, if the town, if they're interested, um, to extend water service, you know, to my property, what it would take? I understand that they would like it to go down Old Fort Road, which is, I don't know, some eighteen hundred, two thousand feet, you know, away from the access to my property versus the shortest distance, which is about three hundred feet, you know, right down the easement. So I want to bring the issue to the council and kind of, kind of, A, kind of ask, you know, is it typical that six months is the timeframe to, uh, get an answer? Um, and then also what your guys' thoughts are about providing water service outside the county and specifically, uh, to this neighborhood.
Uh, Joe? Do you, uh, what, uh, what was the, uh, Madison County, what was their?
Just to give you a little background, as far as the Helmcrest, uh, scenario, it's been a few years ago, we spent hundreds of thousands of dollars moving water mains out along the right of way, moving meter pits out in the right of way to have hydrants and the meters accessible because we're trying to abandon all those easements. We don't want to be in people's backyards with, uh, meters and lines that we can't access. We've had broken lines back there, we've had to take down fences, uh, move sheds and it's, it just doesn't make sense to put a water meter in the backyard where you can't access it in somebody else's yard unless, you know, there's no way to avoid that. The easement that's back there obviously is, uh, I don't even know where the actual easements are, I know there's an easement in there because some of the properties have water mains, some don't. There's power lines run through there, it looks like cable TV, but when there's a description for utility easement, it's usually written out to the utility company, it's not an individual easement for a person like, uh, for instance, if Jeff wanted to run a water line down through there to access where our main is now, he wouldn't be able to just use the easement that was, you know, laid out as a utility easement. He would have to then go through all those property owners and get his own easement for that to extend that direction. Like Jeff said, it's, it's been a while, we've been looking at this. The best way to serve this is to go down thirteen and down Old Fort Road. Um, I don't know if it's a private road, public road. Uh, I know there's sanitary sewer down through there, Fall Creek's got their sewer out front. Uh, I'm sure that the water could be ran down through there just as well. We had a, uh, a developer looking to develop, uh, just east of Old Fort Road. And he was working with us and possibly Madison County Ingles as far as extending our utility up through this direction, which would allow everybody on that road to or at the cost of the developer, putting the line in. And, uh, all the meter pits then would be in the front yard where they're accessible along the right of way. We recently found out that this developer is now going to be working with Ingles Water. And they're looking to do some annexing out in this area. And Ingles is working on extending their water main to State Route thirteen. Uh, whether they're going to go the route of Old Fort Road or if they're going to be going ten fifty. Um, I think the idea would be to find out how many people are interested and probably the biggest bang for their buck is what's gonna, you know, make it feasible. If, uh, you know, if the town wanted to run water up in that area, I obviously wouldn't have any objections to it, but I would think it would be wise to see how many people along that corridor we could get to commit, hooking on, run the numbers to see what it would cost to run the water main and, uh, see if, you know, if the numbers make sense.
If you may, I got a better idea. And it was actually in my September email to Mr. Renner, and it was to contact, uh, the county engineer, Ms. Jessica Baston. I'd said this on purpose because Ms. Baston just happens to be working on a committee that's, um, studying servicing the unincorporated areas of Green Township with, uh, ci- with municipal water, and in fact, they're going to approach the town at some point whenever their study is done. Mr. Renner could have been proactive six months ago while we were negotiating with a developer, probably got in on these Madison County funds. Perhaps it's not too late, you know, because there are still funds. It's just kind of sad that as of last week when I spoke with Ms. Baskin, Ms. Baston, no one has spoken with her. So Madison County was awarded, I don't remember how many, I think it was twenty-five, thirty million dollars, um, to do some of these improvement projects. They've been doing a lot of studies. And one of them again is to, to bring water service to this area. When Joe mentions, uh, doesn't know what Ingles is going to do, I think that's pretty disingenuous, um. A, because I, uh, I addressed this question specifically with Ingles, I don't know, about a week and a half ago when I requested water service from them. You know, wanting to see who's actually going to service the area, right? Because we've got developers. Somehow the town of Fortville is negotiating with developers to bring water service into Madison County, yet have not talked with anybody at Madison County about crossing the line with the utility. I mean, I know this because each email that I get keeps coming back to me saying, hey, you still got to get permission from Madison County, and I'm thinking, how can you negotiate with developers to bring water into a county if you've not talked to the jurisdiction to allow it in the first place? Maybe that's just me using different kind of logic.
Just put in the cart before that, we want to see if it's.
Well, you, you have a person that's requested service. So you can always ask. And Ms. Baston explained that there is no formal process, and she wanted to be the liaison between the county commissioners and the town because she's on this committee and they're studying, you know, the service of water in this area. So still, um, and to bring to Joe's point about the easement, he may be correct, uh, he may not. Um, I can't speak to that, but I can speak to the fact that I do have individual property owners' permission to cross everyone's property to access the dead end of Berkeley Drive to get water for myself. Outside of the twenty-five foot utility easement that's on my property, so I don't know what more I can do to make the town say yes. But it seems that every opportunity it's to just say no or to make it the most difficult possible. My suggestion would be that somebody from the town of Fortville call Ms. Jessica Baston and say, hey, we got people over here in Old Fort Road thinking about getting water service, you think that water study you're doing might come with some funds that could help make this happen? I only know all this disingenuous stuff between Ingles and Joe because I had a conversation with the town manager. And it was basically relating to a map that the town manager had hand drawn after a conversation with Joe about extending the water service from ten fifty up to Old Fort Road on paper, but there's no plan, no, nobody outside of those two have discussed anything. The only thing that Madison County or the Ingles is doing is a looping project, taking the water down ten fifty to service the neighborhood that we missed out on. Uh, and then going north on thirteen up to nine hundred to loop into their current existing system. And so that's where we're at. I'm just simply asking for for service, I don't really care where you give it to me, but I do know that there are complications with coming down Old Fort Road. I only know this because of the places I own there, I, all my deeds tell me that I have a fifty-foot right of way for my road, the length of that drive. So it's kind of hard for me to have a right of way if that is a public road. Now, there could have been something done when the sewers came in, that's very realistic and possible. But as of this moment, nobody at the county can prove that that's a, uh, a county easement. Now, yeah, there's sewers there, the other stuff there. Um, but we don't know for certain, so right now we know for a hundred percent fact that you can run water down that, down that easement. If the town doesn't want to, that's fine, but I'm curious, you know, why you're getting more customers, what's the, what's the, uh, what's the harm? And, and even if I connected over there, what's the harm?
What's the cost? To run water out there that we don't currently have any connections to?
We haven't looked at running water down Old Fort Road, but that again is my recommendation if we were going to do it. Um, to run water for his service the way it's drawn on here, that, that cost would be totally on Jeff. And that would be the capacity fees, tap fees and everything. Because we're putting meters along the right of way. So that would have him coming all the way up there. If there's other folks out there that are interested, it would make sense to run down Old Fort Road and see how, you know, the cost weighs out, but if there's actually other people that are interested, then just go put in a bunch of meter pits at the end of Berkeley Drive. Just so they can scatter and go to every home out there, it doesn't make any sense.
Well, technically that's not feasible anyway, I mean, that's not how water pressure works, so you have to have size of lines, I mean, it's, it's far more complex than just having everybody have meters at the end of Berkeley Drive.
Did the town guys not run the water lines out to Hamilton County?
Absolutely, they did.
That was part of an, uh, an agreement, a development agreement, that there was about a thousand homes coming along with that that offset the cost. The developer paid for all the material and the town crew installed roughly eight hundred feet of pipe, I think it was.
I can't say the only challenge that I would have with connecting at the end of Berkeley Drive, given the distance that I have, um, is that that would need to be a pretty large connection, that, that line. Um, I think I could make it work if, if there was a larger line, say three hundred feet, three twenty-five, something like that, from the main down the, uh, down the, uh, easement. Uh, and then of course, the meter pit on my property, as it would be anywhere else, uh, to my property, that's still about four hundred some feet, I'd probably have to have, uh, an inline pump, but I could make it work, um, that way. Uh, it would be pretty cost, you know, I, I don't even know if it's actually cost effective. However, the alternative is I drill a well into what is eventually, obviously the town's aquifer. I'm getting the town's water one way or the other. Would you rather me have it in, in a, in a well form or, or from the, or from the tap? I mean, it's just kind of which one you want to go?
Whatever side line you ran through there would provide you the, the pressure you need. The volume is what you're going to be missing.
Volume is.
Yep. You won't need a pump because the water tower regulates the pressure, you'll have plenty of pressure to get to that point.
What's the distance?
If we were to go up Old Fort Road and run down, there wouldn't have to be any booster pumps, that would work just fine. Uh, and as far as the aquifer goes, our aquifer doesn't go up into that area.
You think the five eighths line can run five hundred feet with no pressure?
I would upsize that a little bit, but you're not going to need a booster pump on it.
Right, but I, I mean, I'm, what I'm talking about is upsizing the connection to the town's line. Obviously, if I connect with a four-inch pipe to the town's, uh, what's that, four hundred bucks and plus?
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
You know what I'm saying? So what I, what I'm looking at is my cost, not the run, the cost, I can dig a hole, I can run pipe, I can hire someone to make connections, or the town can make those connections and I can pay for that, I mean, there's all kinds of ways to make this happen. Uh, there just has to be a willingness on the person that has the public utility. Where there's a will, there's a way, uh, if there's, if the only way is through private property to a, to a, um, to a government property, well, maybe that, maybe that works, maybe that doesn't work, but there could be a complication with that. I mean, that could be a requirement to purchase, you know, right of way, and then which case a small project turns into a real big project. Uh, and of course, that may seem like that's the plan to keep it cost prohibitive so that people don't get what they're asking for. But I'm showing that there's an alternative. And if we can figure out a way, I'm certainly willing to do it, I mean, I think everyone on this, uh, panel and maybe in the audience would agree that Fortville has some of the best water in the state. Why not let those of us that are used to having, still have it? What's the harm?
Well, like I said earlier, I'm not opposed to serving the whole neighborhood, and I would like to serve the whole neighborhood. I'd just like to see it done the right way.
Well, right way is subjective.
Another line in the easement we're abandoning and setting a meter.
If it's, it's not an easement, it's private, private.
Access to, so where's your meter pit and stuff?
The private line is what you, is what we were talking about.
Then the meter pit would have to be sitting over at Berkeley Drive, and then the rest of the line would be yours. And on that drawing, I don't know if you can tell, but that water line doesn't actually go up to the dead end of Berkeley, it stops about halfway. So you'd have to cut through somebody else's front yard and driveway there to.
The fire hydrant isn't the martyr?
Fire hydrant's at the end, it is not at the dead end of the street. The fire hydrant.
Yeah, yeah, no, but it's past the, i- it's, it's fine, it's not the end of the world, I mean, you know, complications are only complications if you want them to be, I mean, if you want something and it's cost effective, why not? I mean, all I'm looking for is the willingness, all I'm getting is, you know, uh, obstructions.
Yeah, did you get the impression from the leggy of Madison County that we might be able to use some of that money to run?
Well, that's exactly what, that's exactly why I shared the information. The whole purpose of my call with them was to find out the process to get permission to run Fortville's utility into Madison County. And while I'm on the call, hey, oh, by the way, uh, I happened to sit on a committee, and right now we're doing a water study with, with the thirty million we got from the government funds to, to study bringing, uh, municipal water to the unincorporated areas of Green Township. And that was in conversations with Ingles and eventually with Fortville, kind of depended on what Ingles was going to do, right? So once Ingles made, made their plan finalized, that they're going to loop the system, run it all the way down ten fifty, turn north and take it up to nine hundred and loop the system, they're not going south. Now, in the conversation that Mr. Renner had with Mr. Stevenson over here, talked about, which is weird, I've never heard of this, I'm not, I'm not saying it's wrong, but it's probably okay. Some state agency, and I'm probably going to lose the details of it, but, uh, had suggested that maybe the town of Ingles and the town of Fortville connect their water systems for, uh, for purposes of, uh, emergencies, I got the same look you got there, Tanya, I didn't like that idea either. But either way, these two guys, um, thought it would be best to meet in the middle at Old Fort Road, that way, you got ten fifty down there, and you got us at the county line, just come down to Old Fort Road, and then, you know, they can share water. I got your eyes on that. And so, uh, and so anyway, so that's just some of the, the things that I learned in this process, and I just, I wonder, you know, September third or September eighth, when I requested, like, here I am, I had to call a meeting of the council, I apologize for missing the last meeting, totally forgot. And so here I am, uh, just trying to, trying to see about getting municipal water service. The service I'm used to having my entire life.
Do you know if any of those other people over there are interested in getting water?
I know that there's possibly one, I'll tell you what we all want.
That's what they wanted though.
Listen, what we'll all pay for is gas. We'll all pay for natural gas. Water, hit and miss. Um, of course, I'm not going to go door to door, you know, to try to find out, because again, we have this complication with my, you know, with this not being a, uh, public road. Uh, now, if, like I said, if something changed, um, we're, 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 we're still working through that one. Um, so either way, that's kind of where I'm at right now. Um, I know that there's, uh, water within sight of my property, we're three hundred feet from my property to have it. Uh, what can I do? You know?
All these.
Oh, I've talked to all of them, I've talked, I've got all the emails, and I don't talk to them, I have emails, I don't, I don't leave it to voice, uh, and, and and chance, I have, uh, documents. Now again, Madison County still needs to give permission, you know, let's, let's be real here. I don't see why they wouldn't, but, you know, the, the whole thing about Old Fort Road to begin with is they all have sanitary sewer. And they all have that because it became a public health hazard, you know, uh, because of the septic's fail. Most of them have really shallow wells and they really would be benefited by municipal water. The problem is cost, and that's why, man, if Mr. Renner would just call Ms. Baston, there might be funds available to help cover all that.
Did you mention that at all in that first email you?
Oh, yeah.
About the funds?
Oh, yeah, I told you, all of it in there, it was a pretty long email, you know, it was, gave your contact information and everything.
Ingles, I don't want to speak for Ingles, but I know they're looking to get over to thirteen to do their looping, and they're looking at a whole different funding mechanism, never.
Yeah, they're using SRF funds, I've, I've talked with them about, but, but that wasn't a part of, again, they didn't, they didn't get on with Jessica. I mean, you gotta, you want to get in, you gotta call Jessica, we're six months in. Hate to be missing out on stuff for the town, free, free government money, that's how we got a free water tower, come on, guys.
Is that not co- conflict though, because it's Madison County, and this is.
No conflict, it's public service, we're all public entities serving the public good.
You can have to get approval from.
No different than when they did in Hamilton County. I don't know where the funds are, and again, I'm not saying that these funds are specific for a project, I'm just telling you that Madison County was awarded some twenty-five, thirty million dollars in funds for projects like this. Right now, Ms. Baskin, Ms. Baston is in process with a water study for the unincorporated areas and encourage Mr. Renner to contact her to, because they're going to be reaching out whenever the study's done anyway, because, you know, it's either Ingles or Fortville, and right now Fortville's water line is a lot closer than Ingles. It's going to take a while for Ingles to get that water line down there, I mean, and, and all of this is kind of silly, I mean, how you guys don't know, Ed and our engineer triad, and I'm pretty sure that's their engineer.
Their engineer.
You guys don't use triad anymore? Oh, okay, well, we used to, well, that would have been better, you know, that would have, we could have, could have had them coordinating. Uh, but either way, long story short, um, that's what's happening in Madison County, and, uh, I'm just curious what it takes to get water at my address.
Why don't we, um, table this and somebody?
Yeah, we'll make some phone calls. Well, it would be nice, I, I would really appreciate it, six, seven months later.
Joe, can you call Madison County and say please get some of those funds, maybe wait?
I'm sure if we put water down there, everybody would hook on to it.
So there's Ingles. How many houses down there, Joe? How many houses is on the streets?
Maybe forty, sixty, forty, you're talking about forty, fifty units at most.
More than I thought.
Just guessing. Just saying that, just my, my details being twenty-sixty or some eighty. Keep in mind too, the way our rate structure is, we won't be charging stormwater, we won't be charging sewer, we won't be charging power protection for the minimum water bill for those homes out there, seventeen dollars and sixty-four cents a month. So it would take a lot of that to.
I thought Hamilton County people play, take that for protection.
They do, because they've got fire hydrants around on this here. There won't be any fire hydrants unless we extend it and go down Old Fort Road. If we go through the backyard, he's too far away from any fire hydrants to charge.
I also, I also found out something interesting in this process, which might help you. I don't know, you, this I can't speak to because it's across the county line. But apparently, Old Fort Road, the whole subdivision is in Hancock County's drainage jurisdiction. Because it's in the Stottermeyer something ditch, it's some weird, just the way it all drains. Um, and so perhaps, you know, there is a possibility that, that the town could, uh, run storm sewers. Oh, they would absolutely love to have storm sewers, because every time it rains, it is a huge mess all up and down there, so storm sewers, for sure. We'd love to have that. Um, I don't know, cost obviously, but that is absolutely something that they need, and we are already in Hancock, and that's, that's where it's weird because, you know, most of these little, uh, areas where, like even our ditch in town is the Hancock County's ditch. You know, we, I don't even know if we're, I don't know if we're maintaining it on our own, or if they're giving us any money, I don't even think there, any of that's happening. I don't even think they're collecting on the ditch anymore. Um, but the, but the reality is that their, uh, Hancock County is servicing that area for drainage. I don't know how that works, that's interagency stuff, but there could be a way, uh, to, to, to provide storm water, they would absolutely, uh, go for that, for sure.
Where are you getting the water from now for that house that you don't have?
Well. A well.
Oh, you do have.
Yeah, everybody has a well, I mean, yeah, you have to have a well, there's no other source.
I thought, I thought you said there wasn't, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Mount Vernon Optimist Club representative Steve, Steve Ort to address the council concerning the town of Fortville, uh, the Mount Vernon Optimist Club Athletic Field Use Agreement. Come on up.
How you doing? Uh, Steve Ort, active, uh, board president for the club. Um, really just wanted to kind of get in front of you guys and we kind of want to, we are kind of at the point where we're going to have to separate from the town, um, just due to cost. Uh, the new contract, and we already have fields about comfort. You know, we're, we are going to build two field, two more fields out there for our little kids, so it's just, uh, fortunately, it's a financial decision, um. You know, we don't have a lot of registrants at this time and we just can't spend the money at both fields, it's just not, not feasible anymore, so it's been a great partnership, uh, the parks department's been great to work with. It's just honestly, it just comes down to money. Okay. Uh, talked to our board several times and we've, you know, we've tried to figure out how we could do it, and it's just, it's just not feasible. Yeah. So, I don't know.
We, uh, we understand, I mean, the.
Yeah, we've even adopted that, we've got three different travel teams now that, you know, different age groups to try to move with the times, but, um, it's just part of it, I mean, you know, we spend maintenance costs at Mount Comfort and then doing it here, it's just, you know, get hit twice. Uh, it might not seem like a lot upfront, but overall it is, you know, you pay umpires and, you know, concessions and nobody wants to volunteer anymore, so it's tough.
I know that.
Always have to pay the users, huh?
No, we've actually donated, uh, you know, I think, I don't know, I don't want to quote it because I don't know exactly the numbers, but I know back in like twenty eighteen maybe, I think it was the last time we probably donated for the partial to the fencing, fifteen grand, maybe, I don't remember, uh. They've always donated, you know, money or whatever, but it was kind of put into place to where pay, you know, seventeen dollars a kid per registrant, um, in order to basically maintain priority of the fields. So it's just, I don't know, I just know how rumor mills go, and we know how town of Fortville can be, and I did, I wanted to get in front of it for.
We have Fortville kids playing, all right?
Yeah, they're, yeah, they're ninety percent of our kids are, are Mount Vernon. Uh, we do have some that come in from Greenfield or, you know, uh, Pendleton or Fall Creek, but majority of them are not. But you know, also like basketball season alone, like we lose money every year. But you know, also like basketball season alone, like we lose money every year. We rent the facility in Fortville. We rent the three gyms at the schools. We don't have concessions. So, you know, everything is cost every single bit of it. So we, we literally lose thousands every year of basketball alone. But we're not going to stop doing it. I mean, it's just.
Right.
Our only revenue stream is, is basically concession stands and donations and sponsors.
You have to use it paid to use the field that Mount Comfort?
No, so those are, even though the property is owned by the school, uh, the agreement long, you know, years ago, the Mount Comfort was there. The fields are, are ours essentially. I mean, yes, the property is the school, but they're Mount Vernon Optimus Fields. We maintain them. We, we built the original ones and the concession stand. And then they, when they relocated, they built those again for us. So nobody uses those except for us. We, we handle everything there.
I feel like the park is for the kids and I think the optimists are about to use the ball fields.
So you're, you're, you're making a motion that they get it for free, uh, free or what, what price are you looking at?
Honestly, I, I, it's just.
What was it? When has it always been?
It's always been free.
It's been, yeah, it's been donations of what we could do that year. If we had a good year, good, you know, the problem is like, they all have full-time jobs, right? So like, I'm in the process of, of my off time building these fields myself. Fortunately, my work has equipment I'm able to use and, um, but you know, we can't do it every day, all day.
You do pay, pay for the community standard, don't you, for the basketball?
Correct. Yeah.
You know, my granddaughter played basketball for the Optimists. That is a great program for the kids.
I used to play Optimus Ball as a kid.
Yeah, I mean, I hate.
Probably most people groomed it.
To miss out because they can't afford to pay for the field.
And that's nothing like a lot of our kids, some of our kids, I should say a lot, some, it's getting smaller each year, but some can't afford to pay, afford to pay it anyway. So we sponsor them anyway. We never turn kids away. It is, doesn't matter.
If you have a sponsor, they have to pay to play that once they can. Optimus Ball. They play for free.
Yeah, we, they used to do, I know when I was playing, it used to be like, I mean, maybe the parents donate or volunteers some time in the concession, but those, those days are gone. I mean, we have to pay twelve bucks an hour probably to get somebody in the concession. So by the time you staff it and it's just, profits are a lot smaller. Fortunately, we have a board member that runs the concession and.
Um, this is just, we just started here about this. So let me, can we table this and I'll take a vote on it? I want to know what the real cost of, um, of, you know, what our cost.
We just, we just, we basically this.
You're not going to stay here because of the cost.
The contract, like there's things in the contract that we as a board cannot sign. We can't sign to it. For example, like it'd ask for a list of names for our kids. Like we just, we can't give those out for privacy reasons. I mean, I can't even, I can't give it to parents. It's not a custody. I can't even get them, let alone, you know, the town.
So you, how many kids do you have sign up a year usually to play?
I feel like we had probably probably four hundred baseball and probably another hundred. This year it's gone about half of that.
How many nights a week would you be using the diamond?
So like Hampton, the three small fields or the, the new water plant is that, um, those are usually six days a week, Monday through Saturday.
Every evening?
Usually, uh, just because if we have, because usually we'll have twelve T-ball teams and we use those fields for T-ball up through rookie, which is basically three-year-olds up to.
What about the other field? Will you be using the Lil' League Diamond?
Uh, that one, even last year was kind of seldom because we play a lot of interleague with Fall Creek and, uh, Greenfield and New Powell. So a lot of those we play at Mount Comfort anyway.
Are you basically just wanting the ones?
The pretty little. Okay, literally softball fields. I mean, because right now we, we made it work with like, because right now our fields at Mount Comfort are two dedicated baseball fields, which are not little league at all. I mean, they're not, they're not T-ball fields. They're basically ten-year-olds and up. And then we have three softball fields and we're basically having to share all those with, you know, so you're having to force coaches to coach, you know, practice on a, you know, Sunday afternoon or a Saturday afternoon or Friday night and, you know, coaches, they all got schedules too. So it's tight. We're making it work, but it's tight.
Keith, does anybody else use those fields?
Yeah.
From all their towns?
Okay.
So, yeah, we weren't, we weren't looking for, like, anything in general. We just wanted to, i- if that's what it's come to, we just want to leave on good terms. We don't. The town and the, and the Optimus Club has been a partner for, I think I looked it up. It's been around since nineteen sixty-seven. So.
Yeah.
It's definitely older than me.
Okay, well, let's have heat about.
My name is Buck Melinda and I think I moved out here in nineteen seventy-eight and actually had three sons. My wife taught at, uh, Fortville Elementary for twelve years and they took her to the intermediate school until they closed that. And I think she ended up her teaching career of thirty-three years at, uh, Mount Comfort. But, uh, uh, we've been involved with, uh, Mount Vernon Youth Baseball Program that was back a long, long time ago, that went out of business after I left that program. We used to have eight, ten teams in Bay Bruce. Uh, same thing with, uh, eight to ten teams in minor league, nine and ten-year-old kids. Uh, same thing in Bay, uh, majors and then travel programs came about. And the travel programs are good. I'm not knocking the travel programs, but they took the cream of the crop. And then occasionally some kid would get cut and their father would go out and start another travel program and it would be a B team. And then there was C teams and now there's D teams and they're raiding all of our rec programs. League, baseball and basketball and much of it out here. And if you say that I coached you to, I'll deny it. I've coached over fifty years of, uh, baseball and basketball and most of it out here in the community. I'm here tonight because there was a man that was a member of the Fortville Optimus Club by the name of Dick Sutherland that passed away about a week or two ago. And, uh, they, all the Optimus Clubs were encouraged to start another club. And Fortville started a club in this white off spot called Mount Comfort. And he was our charter president coming from the Fortville Club. I was a charter vice president and went on to be president of the Optimus Club five times. Uh, I've been in the Optimus for more than forty-two or three years. And I am a member because it stands for their creed as friend of youth. And I love the way that you said it. Uh, we're not out here to take you guys money. We're not out here to take the kids money. We're out here to offer affordable things for people that can't afford it. And as Steve said, we have several kids, twenty, thirty kids every year that they're single family homes, parents, single moms, single dads. Some of them are living with their grandparents that cannot afford to play little league baseball. We let them play for free. And as Steve said, we used to have the parents would donate a few hours to work a concession stand. We can't hardly do that. We're paying the, uh, the band, we're paying the, uh, the wrestling team, who they had, used to have a bass club out here to go work concessions for us. Uh, uniforms have gone up, uh, baseballs, all the equipment, everything is just sky high. We're trying to hold these tug-on rates down and a lot of these kids can't, they can't afford eighty or ninety dollars to play baseball. They certainly can't afford two thousand dollars to play travel ball. So, uh, worked out here for the community. Uh, one of our biggest problems and, and fears are when Dick Sutherland passed away last week, he had, uh, his family agreed in lieu of flowers, make a donation to the Mount Vernon Optimist. Gosh, we're hoping to get maybe eight or ten checks in for, in lieu of flowers, but that might help pay for some of the scholarships. But, uh, again, I've been a member here. I've coached here. I love, uh, uh, I love the community. My wife's daughter, whole teaching career out here practically. Help and we're sorry that we have to make, we had to make a decision. Our team that we, our teams have already been picked. We've got a schedule set up. They're letting us put two more out the size of the Hampton Fields, small fields for little bitty kids and, uh, at Mount Comfort. Dollars to pay for the spring season and eight or nine thousand to pay for the fall season. We cannot afford that. Uh, without doubling practically the cost of our program. So that's all we're standing is saying, thanks for the memories. We love Fortville. We love, uh, playing out here. Our biggest headache and think the headache to the club have a big ball day every year. If we aren't playing in Fortville, we can't have our ball day. We can't have vendors come in. We can't have, uh, fifty-nine out here putting us on TV, uh, Fortville and the things that the community does. We're losing a lot to this community more than we get. Touching the lives of kids. So, and again, we appreciate the time. Thank you. I don't care what they say. I got a lot of fond memories of Fortville. Uh, thanks for your help.
Thank you.
Make sure I'm taking all of my stuff.
Evening, council. Keith with the parks manager for the record. Um, so obviously we've had this discussion for quite some time. Um, council, I believe everybody except for maybe Mr. Rommel was on board when we adopted this, uh, contract. Um, I'm not sure which, um, contract was being referred to as far as eight or nine thousand for spraying, eight or nine thousand for fall, because the way the contract was set up was there was nothing for fall, fall's fall. Um, I've got travel teams that come out and use the facility. Um, seventeen dollars a kid was what we had agreed upon and what we had agreed on initially with, with the Optimists. Um, with that being said, Steve, how much do you guys spend out at Mount Comfort every year in maintenance and mowing, trimming, spraying? All the things that you guys have to do to take care of those fields? But you're still spending ten, twelve, thirteen thousand, right? So. Right. And then it's, it's not, it's not cheap. Um, just so you guys are kind of aware, just strictly on the materials and chemicals that we as a parks department put down every year, um, is anywhere between eleven and twelve thousand dollars. That's not including labor. That's not including mowing. That's not including normal type stuff. That is taking care of everything from trash to resetting bases to all that kind of stuff. Um, I think when we had put initially this kind of contract in place with the Optimists, it wasn't to obviously make money off of, because the reality of the situation at seventeen dollars a kid, let's say their enrollment last year was four hundred and fifty. Um, you know, let's say they had fifty kids that weren't able to pay. And I, I'm a youth sports guy, like I am. That's been my entire life. So I get it. Um, I think the total would have equated out to somewhere around forty-five hundred bucks for the year. Now to kind of put that in perspective, just the materials that I put on today on the fields were thirty-six hundred dollars. I was only on two fields. So that's kind of right now, what we're looking at from a cost standpoint. Now you had asked me about, do we have people utilizing those fields? Yes, we have got quite a few people utilizing those fields. Uh, set structure that was put in the fee schedule, uh, per field. Um, and in our fee schedule, we also made it so that there wasn't any kind of discount even for five oh one C threes. Cause I would say ninety-five percent of the teams that are coming out practicing on these fields are five oh one C three, but we're not giving them any kind of discount because they're already cheap enough as it is. Um, the reality of the situation is, is if we continue to, let's say we schedule out every ball field on every time slot, we would probably come coast to breaking even period, just on kind of materials for the year. As far as what we do and what we put down. I think Steve, and a- and again, this is no hard feelings with the Optimists. We've had this conversation and it was nothing personal and I understood where they were coming from. And I know basketball, we've had those discussions, takes a lot from them. Uh, simply because of the fact that they can't run concessions and the school is charging you guys a fair amount as well. And so there's a lot of things I kind of, kind of think are involved. You know, the, the nature of the beast and as much as I hate, I grew up playing in the local league as well. Like our travel teams were all-star teams after, you know, the season was over, the best kids in the league got together and we traveled and played the other leagues. Unfortunately, that's just not the way it is anymore. There is a place for recreational ball still and I, and I truly believe that. I think one of their biggest niches is probably the younger kids, if I'm not mistaken, the real young kids. Um, but unfortunately, you know, if, and it's great that they're adding, um, some, some travel programs, but back in the day, the Optimist used to have field workdays, right? Like the parks guys didn't touch those ball fields because they did have the volunteers. I was president of Fall Creek Little League for quite a while and even ten, fifteen years ago, it was hard to get volunteers to come out. Um, you know, field cleanup days, that's been non-existent. Um, there's a lot of different aspects of not just their league. I'm not picking on them. They're just here tonight. That, that is the biggest issue. You can't get people to coach. You can't get cleaned up. You can't get people to break the fields. And so as the parks manager, right? Like I can't just let those fields go. Like I can't say, well, the Optimists are using them. So we're just not going to mow them and we're not going to touch them. Like we have to be out there just to kind of give you an idea of kind of the time we're spending on the fields a week. If I average out, beginning of the season's not quite fair. I kind of took that out simply because, for example, today we were on the fields, two of us for eight hours. Okay, that was pretty much our entire day today was working on ball fields. Um, so on an average week between mowing, spraying, doing anything, we dry the fields every day. Cause if you don't drive them, you're going to have weeds. Um, we probably spend six to ten hours between the two of us, um, on the fields every week. Obviously more than what pretty much anybody can do from a volunteer standpoint, right? Because they, everybody does have a full-time job and, and they have to do other things. So I completely understand where they're coming from. I just want everybody to be aware of kind of the costs that are involved in this. And that, you know, from a park standpoint, there's no trying to make money off of anybody regardless of what it is. Um, we're just kind of trying to help offset some of those working budgets. Because if I'm spending eleven, twelve thousand dollars a year on field maintenance, that's obviously being taken away from the slide that's broken or the bridge that needs to be replaced and things. Certain little things like that, that you might not think that to their point, it's not a lot, but it adds up. Unfortunately, the nature of athletic fields, particularly baseball fields, are the most expensive things to maintain. They just are. Soccer fields are all grass. You spray them, you mow them. Football fields are all grass. You spray them, you mow them. I mean, there, there's not a ton of maintenance in there, but then you throw in fencing, you throw in all the different things that need to happen on a baseball field. And they're just, it costs more money. It's just the, the way that it is. Um, you've seen a lot of, of high schools starting to go. Most colleges have already gone to turf for that reason. That they, they're trying to cut down their upfront costs are quite a bit more, costs about a little over a million dollars to put in a baseball field turf. Um, but their backend on that is obviously saving money for not having to do all the things that we're doing and obviously that they have to do out of Mount Comfort. Does anybody have any other questions for me as far as kind of?
I've always been for charging people from out of town to use our fields. I'm not sure I agree that we should be charging people from Fortville. They pay taxes.
I give you a little bit of perspective. I went over to Pendleton today and sat down with their parks director. Uh, Pendleton's youth league, their local youth, the Arabian baseball over there. Uh, they pay the parks department fourteen dollars a kid and from April through the end of June, they have to maintain the food, fields and parks department doesn't touch them. So just to kind of put it in perspective of, I understand there's taxpayers involved and it's local people. Um, with that being said, and this isn't a dig on them, but there's a Mount Vernon Marauder baseball is made up of mostly Mount Vernon kids, right? They're not part of the Optimist organization. They're getting charged just the same as everybody else is. Um, they're basically made up of local tax, tax-based people. It's just, it's kind of morphed itself into trying to figure out a way that we can, again, not make money. I, I'm, by no means are we trying to make money off any of this stuff. Trying to do as much as we can for free. Um, but the reality of the situation is these costs, just like they're talking about baseball's going up and cost of uniforms are going up. Well, so did rakes and all the field material and our equipment and gas and everything else that we're doing as well to maintain those fields. Um, a- and not to sound, I'm very proud of our fields. What I can tell you is those two softball fields right now look better than probably nine percent of the high school fields in the state at this point in time. But we put a lot of work into them. Um, and so I want people to be able to use them. I had a, a phone call this weekend for a last minute, hey, we need to. All paid and, you know, well, with those. all paid and, you know, well, those are the kind of things that were that we're kind of looking at doing. I'm not opposed to having some kind of agreement in place, not even necessarily agreement, a donation. That was one thing, and this was prior to prior to Steve coming on board as a president, but Kim, Kim Johnson came to me the first couple of years that I was here and said, hey, what do you guys need? The first year, I think the optimist helped resurface the gym and the community center. And then the second year, they ended up giving fifteen thousand for our fencing, part of our fencing, I think the total bill was on that just in between forty two and forty five thousand dollars. And they gave us about fifteen there. Obviously, COVID put a hurt on their organization. They, correct me if I'm wrong, you guys didn't have baseball all in twenty twenty, right? Including fall. So that obviously took took a now, it wasn't just them. Everybody was kind of in that in that same boat as far as leagues were concerned. And so if it's something that it's, hey, you know, we can help redo a dugout. Like, I don't necessarily, I'm not necessarily tied to a monetary in game here, but having some kind of help, because the reality of the situation is, again, there's just two of us, hopefully soon to be three of us, but, you know, keeping up on all this kind of stuff takes takes time and it takes money. And so I don't know what that looks like. I don't. I mean, if it's a discussion amongst yourselves, it may be something that's a little bit different. Last year would have been somewhere around thirty five hundred dollars that they would have donated based on registration. Which, you know, for six days, that's the other half of this too, right, is we inherited Hampton Fields. Well, there's three more fields that rugged to take care of at this point in time because they weren't taken care of prior. Not necessarily because of anybody's lack of not doing it, it just the way that those fields were structured down there. And we're also fighting a little bit right now with the new water plant being built has really shifted the water flow back there. And so we're fighting a little bit of some stuff that hopefully will be remedied remedy, but obviously we can't just neglect those fields because of construction and everything else. So we've got three new fields that we added since I've come on board. And so, you know, just kind of daily maintenance, a daily cost. It's really all we're looking at. You know, if the council would like to revisit even the fee schedule, I mean, that's up to you guys. I'm just kind of giving you some information and the heads up. If anybody's got any other questions, I'll be happy. And again, I I can't stress this enough. Everybody that I've worked with since I've been here with the optimist has been good people, like nobody's intentions have been bad. Like, I don't necessarily think there was, there's not any hard feelings per se. It's been kind of the perfect storm of us, you know, positive things going up and us looking to, you know, maybe have some accountability on those fields versus, you know, them struggling. And again, I say them, most rec leagues, I would say almost all that I know of struggling from an attendance standpoint, struggling from registration standpoint, simply just kind of coming together at the right time. And so our fields, and I'll be the first to admit, are not real conducive to have a lot of people over there. I know one of the attractions to Mount Comfort itself is the clover leaf. You've got four diamonds around a centered concession stand and a centered restroom, which is how most of these facilities are set up. Obviously, it's a little bit tougher, because when that park was built, it was the only thing around, right? Like, people just they they bow. That's what it was. It was forty, fifty, sixty, seventy years ago. And now you've got these monstrosities like Grand Park and Coke Championship Park up in Westfield. And I mean, it's just, it's kind of the nature of the beast as far as I'm concerned. Questions for me?
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
But do you need a decision from us? How soon?
Because we're
Yeah, new board.
Okay.
As if I'm playing here. All right. But I do know and I, I don't want to be probably even through the draft. This is staying, but there's greater fault, but it says seventeen dollars. It's really major, so that's where I get like, I I get what I feel, you know, I I move on and keep moving forward with this contract. You know, I still I still do that with somebody. The green field.
Okay.
Be this, this is true, I guess. I still love that.
I promise you, we'll take a look at it.
Well, if 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 there's a pain in the neck, how about this? But we use Hampton Fields. We'll put the two new fields, but this rain and the weather, they're not going to probably be ready to play this year. So we're fighting to find them. And our biggest group of kids is the little guys. Our six, seven, eight year, nine year olds are the are the biggest group of kids. If we got to leave these Hampton Fields, we'd be up here, you know, maybe one construction is standing right there by Hampton Field. That could be a help and the keeper foot and the doors are down the road. But really, we have one little league field here and we have one Bay Brook field that I loved my coach Bay Brook for eleven years. Did be fun. He remembers those days. You know, it's the dog. We don't want to make a dog park out of India or other fields up there. So we were, again, maybe it's a misunderstanding. We thought this was seventeen dollars first season, spring and fall. We didn't sign them. We can't sign them. We we just, it's just too much money. They've asked us for money in the past, and when we got money, we're three of them. We get donations to the schools. We gave donations, Kim Johnson, one board of directors there for the optimist then, and we gave that we gave money to fix the roof over there at the community building.
Right.
If we can't work this out, we just don't be, we can call it not burn. It's Parker can bring it that way. We'll figure it out. It's here. It's you. Don't look at it.
No, no, I'm 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 listening. I just want to make sure I get everything in. I just want to.
And we use that facility and we can't get into it after done. Right now, our biggest group is our little bitty guys. We use Hampton Fields here. Maybe we could still, we got a schedule. We got teams, we got
You need to know by tonight?
We need to know soon.
As soon, okay. How about, how about the next time council meeting? That'll be too long.
Did you say you already have your schedule set?
The candy record, baseball and softball. And
Well, we don't expect it to.
Real quick, the Hampton Fields were never are of kind of any of the agreement in the first place. And I I'm going to assume it wasn't one of these guys, but there's they're practicing over there now.
Yeah.
And they were actually on the softball fields and I walked out to have a conversation just to say, hey, you know, how you doing? And they said, well, we can be out here because somebody on the board told me that we can be out here and it doesn't matter what the parks, this is a public park and we you can't kick us out. Said, okay, so kind of things that I'm trying to avoid, right? Like, I have no problems with, I mean, Hampton, we don't rent out Hampton Fields. We never have. It's T-ball age kids. You can't, you
So it's okay for them.
They passed the age of six or seven, those fields are, I don't want to call them useless. You can use them for a wiffle ball field if you want. The the problem with is obviously it still costs us money to maintain those fields as well, right? So
Again, but the 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 what they do for the community, the ball day, everything else, that's, that's, there's a lot of money that's generated in that and and marketing and all the other things that the community was was back us.
A fee schedule in place for those fields. So it's
They they could use them.
Okay, let's let me let me say, let me have that kind. Oh, wait a minute. Okay, never mind. I got it. I got it. Okay.
So basically, you're saying they can use them if this is not intended for those.
But do we need them to sign something for insurance purposes? That's at least something.
No, they usually certificate, yeah. You haven't scheduled anything on those fields or nothing, right?
They just Not on the optimist field, no, but in the same token, being that it is a public park and if that's what they're planning on doing, if that so
But they need to stay on those diamonds.
Yeah, I mean, at this point in time, those are really for that age group. It's those are the only diamonds that really make sense anyways. And I'm going to apologize for just kind of the water issues down there. There's not much we can do about it right now. But as far as teams calling and asking me, hey, can we use a field, then we'll, you know, go through the process of renting those fields because we ask for insurance. We, you know, there's quite a few things that we ask when people come in and utilize those fields. Those don't including in that, we never did that. So
Okay, so
They can use them.
But with with that being said, if public park, if father and son are down there playing and they have a scheduled practice, it's a public park, right? So you you can't really kick one taxpayer off for another taxpayer at that point in time. So that's what I'm saying. We just I I I don't have any way to prioritize anything down there, if that makes sense, right? So if
And most people would leave if you can have an organized event. People are
And most people do.
Yeah.
But my point being, right, is I mean, it is that kind of public portion of that. So I mean, whatever happens down there happens. I mean, it's again, we maintain those fields, but those aren't the ones that our quote unquote, travel teams are asking to play on. So
Still the other two diamonds?
Yeah. You name it.
Okay, do you do you do you need those at all? The other two would
Softball diamond?
We have, we have five fields right now in Mount Comfort. And that we use for everything. So some of them are skin fields we play little league on, some of them are not just TV fields. But we don't have to have little league field down there.
Do you have any softball? One? You have softball diamonds?
Three.
Three.
Most of the golf ball is always paid or not. I would say for those, I'm with the third part. Anything in the backfield. Honestly, it's one of the best teams that there is, honestly, so guys, I mean, I don't know. I mean, we do have parents or whatever, I have a practice we got eight kids, so that'd be a problem.
No, I don't think a lot of problems.
We get to get on a schedule in the next week or
Yeah, that would help.
So you know when we want at least Hampton Fields. If the girl softball fields are available, we can only play two games a time there, but okay, we can provide hopefully that they
I think that's what he's been waiting on is some idea about scheduling. Yeah.
Oh, because of this contract, I understand. So give it, give us a schedule and we'll we'll make, we'll we'll make adjustments. Okay?
We'll figure it out. Are there bleachers down there, Heath? Or are those the bleachers down at the Hampton Field?
There's down there. There are bleachers left. Those were behind the softball fields right there as you come in. They were moved for all that construction when they put in the whites and then they had asphalt that they had to replace. And so those are planning on going back tonight because actually, or not tonight, this year Joe brought to me, there's an uncapped well or I I don't, so there there's a some gas thing from the state that they've got to come in. So those bleachers are going out anyways, and most of them are in pretty rough shape, to be real honest with you. So anything else?
I will have some questions later about something else. All right, get us a schedule and we'll work, we'll work with you. All right. All right, thank you. All right, there is no old business. Joe? You have anything for us?
I got a few items here to update you on. We did offer someone for the position in the utility office. We're waiting to get a background check. So if the background check comes back and they accept the job, then we'll try to have them here at the next council meeting, see if folks can meet. We're looking at setting up a program for permitting and tracking code enforcement, zoning and all that. We've got the contract, sent it to Alex today to start reviewing, looking it over to make sure that everything in the contract is sufficient. And then also, we're looking to utilize a collection agency for some unpaid utility bills. And I guess they could use for other bills as well. This agency that we're talking with wouldn't cost the town any money at all. They get their money on top of what they collect. So with COVID and not being able to shut water off and liens and being short-staffed and everything that we felt like we need to implement something that was a little more cost effective rather than going the lean process. We still can fall back on the liens, but we want to go this route first. So again, that contract, I sent it this morning to Alex to to review that, to see if everything in that contract is worded that he's he's good with. Our paving project has started. They've started milling a lot of the surface coats off the existing streets. They're on the south side now. Digging full depth, putting the full depth basketball paint. I think there's some roads are going to be like eight inches thick down there. So they were pretty rough shapes. They're trying to beef those up a little bit. The idea is to try to get out of the way on the south side before NDOT closes Broadway. Did look at the schedule for the Broadway project. And it is just the south side, the south two thirds is what they're going to try to have substantially completed by this November. And the next year will be the north side of the road. Their goal, and I kind of reluctant to put it out there, not having the dates yet, but their goal, they're shooting for April seventeenth to start setting up traffic control, which is going to stop all traffic going northeast. It'll be one lane going I call it west, southwest, and everybody else will be detoured around. That'll be shut down for saying two and a half to three months to be able to get the pretty much two thirds of the southern portion of that Broadway completed. They are still planning on having a meeting with all the property owners and business owners along that corridor. First, I want to make sure the council is all invited, so you guys are up to speed. It's my understanding that they're working on a flyer now that they're going to go door to door and hand it out and make sure that every business has been contacted and knows, you know, where we're going to meet and make sure we can talk about the best way to service their business as they close the road down and they go through that area. Next thing I got here is a water plant. It looks like they're they're planning again, start up with that new plant in roughly two weeks. But hopefully, by then we'll start pumping some water, doing some training and hopefully we'll have that plant up and going. Internet, that's all I've got unless you get something for me.
Question. They're going to close the one-way traffic down. Do you know what route they'll be taking those people around?
It'll be going, Broadway will continue to go west. The traffic going north, I believe they're going, NDOT has to reroute traffic on state highways. So they'll probably be rerouting in two thirty-four up to nine and then back up to sixty-seven. That's official detour.
Be using town streets.
That's the official detour. On a control detour will be how the locals can find their way around and that's how they'll be.
Yeah.
A lot of the side streets and I hope folks can be patient, but you know, there's going to be a lot of additional traffic on the side streets that we're not used to seeing until this project's open up. It's my understanding that the cross streets along Broadway will continue to be open unless they just happen to be working in that intersection.
If they do start using our side streets, suggested that we we put some stops sometimes on Mill and what's the other street Pearl? Just to, because if not, they got a straight. Yeah, to get to fifty-five miles an hour down Mill Street, because they don't have to stop until they get the
I understand, I understand exactly what you're talking about. And I'm I'm all for trying to put some other swings up to slow people down and
Yeah.
control them. And hopefully we can have the police out in the neighborhoods watching a little bit as well. Yeah, we could put some temporary speed.
Yeah, we'll have to do something. Oh, they're going to be starting in the seventeenth. Is the speaker's not working back there?
Can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Okay, Joe. Okay. Yeah, they're just doing a road diet on, uh, on, uh, Broadway. Yeah, do me a favor, just come by Denver's, I'll talk to you about it for about half an hour.
Two lanes, one lane in each direction.
Yeah, with a shared turn lane down the middle. There'll be sidewalks on both sides. Decker streetlights, benches, bike racks, dressing it all up, along with that, they're putting turn lanes in at Maple Street. So there'll be a. Will be three lanes, there'll be a right hand, left hand in the street. Uh, so make it a little bit easier and they won't have cars backing up at Maple. Uh, part of this project also includes the trail from Garden Street there by the Catholic Church on down to two west. And then it also includes a traffic light that's going in at two west and fourville Pike. And then it also includes a bridge replacement down on sixty-seven towards Mopordso. But they're gonna be able to keep. Both lanes open and reroute them through that as they go. There's a lot, there's a lot going on, especially with our paving projects we got now. We're trying to get that done and get out of the way before end up.
Two years.
Two years. It's, it's actually a thirty month project, but for the most part. It's only gonna be shut down to one lane on Broadway, from what I'm understanding, two and a half to three months throughout the summer. And then as they move to the north side, then they should be able to do temporary lanes built or. I, I won't quote exactly where, but I think there's gonna be at least two new crosswalks put in. The crosswalks?
They're driving down the highway now. They're driving down the highway now. I know.
You can cross the highway at any intersection.
It's hard to chase him down when they do it to you. They didn't have one. Yeah, well, you can't find him, he can't.
Okay, well, we can move on. All right, uh, is that all? Does anybody else have any questions for Joe?
Trail going down. Do it.
It's actually, it'll be on both sides. Actually, on the north side, it'll be wider. I think, and don't quote me on these footages, but I think. Or side, which is why they call it kind of a multi-use trail or a, a path, I guess, on the north side. The south side will be sidewalk only, roughly six feet wide. So it's not gonna be as.
Trail, just a trail.
Trail going to.
It's on the west side. Which is at two hundred and gets off the road.
All right, uh, he, I got one question for you. The, uh, the basketball goals down there, uh, where we put in the new lighting. Do, how much would it cost us to build four new ones? Twenty thousand?
Four grand a piece for the backboard and rims on them.
Holy macro.
I'm gonna see if we can, one of the things I need to see if we can do is how, part of the issue is a couple of those backboards kids have dunked on them. And it's one thing if they bend the rims, we can replace that, but they've actually bent some of the, the brackets that are holding the. Backboard on and the backboard itself. Um, so.
Boards are routed away.
Yeah, so those, we, and that was on the list of things that I want to try and get done this summer is getting four new goals for that. We're just, we might have to just do like. Two this year and then two next year and probably good. So, and I wanna, the other issue that we have is we do have kids that are. Dunking on those. We need some breakaways that are gonna be able to withstand the wear and tear, not the old school, just stagnant. Yeah, they're not, they're not cheap. Matter of fact, I was looking at those in the book. But, um, is, I wrote an offer letter to a gentleman last night, uh, for our parks position. Um, and he accepted that. He dropped off that offer letter this morning. So his name is William Jones. I will have him come to the next council meeting. Uh, he is planning on starting a week from today. So. We get some more hands in here to continue to try and catch back up on some of this.
And then that, that one swing that's out there, I guess it's got a couple of boards that ride. That there's a, a, a bench swing. That it, take a look at it, there, there's, it's starting to rot.
Yeah, under those, we try and replace.
The floor.
Pick some every year, like first year I did all the ones in landmark. Last year we did the ones out in front of the shelter. Like we just got every year, we try and grab different, different ones.
Belting up on top, uh, the shelters on those two. Cause see, do we own a power washer or anything here?
We don't have water out there, so we don't have, we don't have water out there.
You don't have any water to get the power washing?
No, um, but what, those are all scheduled to hopefully be painted this summer. One of the projects that we're gonna repaint and take a look at doing that. So along with that restroom is down at the dog park. And we'll see what's gonna happen with that outdoor restroom. I don't know. Again. Get some tax pay, more tax base in here, get their budget up a little bit. I'll get whatever you want me to get, but.
To the big shelter down there by the playground. Uh, the southwest corner of that thing is blowing up off the rafters in the wind. The other day it's not connected.
Okay, we'll take a look at it.
Before it rips the thing off. You might look at that, but it's Wednesday.
So, yeah, we had a little bit of wind.
Yeah.
We, four trees come down this last one, so. Just don't matter if I play catch up with.
Yeah, crazy.
Anything else?
Are we getting trees this spring?
Yeah, I mean, we'll look at, we're getting, so. The next council meeting, I was gonna say something about it, but we've got our Arbor Day thing that we always do. Um, we've got four hundred trees coming this year. Fort Naz had reached out to me. They've got a group of people that wanna donate, donate some time that Saturday prior. And I think we're looking at planning at least twenty or thirty of those that I get. Um, so we're gonna put those kind of in and around the park. And then we'll give away the rest of them. Um, we had talked about doing some, I actually got a text earlier from. Somebody asking about landmark parking, some of those along that back edge that had come down. My concern with that is until we really kind of see what's going on with this FAI project and. Line of sight and if that comes to fruition, I don't want to plant new trees and have to turn around and rip them right back out if, if things are gonna. Change over there, but we do have a couple in the memorial side of the park that we're gonna try and get replaced this summer as well, which is, I think. Billy Caldwell and there was one other one, I think that an old. I prepared something that came down. Last year, I think it was, so we'll get them.
You know what kind of tree you're getting this year?
Yes, we've got, um. Bald cypress. Button bush, persimmon and, uh, Norway spruce. Each.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief's not here. Missy's not here and Alex isn't here. Does Alex have anything for us? I don't have anything. Okay, all right, thank you. Uh, public comment. No public comment? Oh, well, come on up. All right, well, we'll let, we'll, we'll consider you, you, you sit there. We have in a concert series, you'd have to ask FAI. Um, no, we're not.
Would you like to do it? Cause when I made a comment, remember, stuck with Christmas decor.
Yeah. Yeah.
It was a fun time.
We just got, find somebody wants to take that, uh, project on.
Got a field.
Uh, well, you know, they, their whole mission, um, to begin with was to bring, um, awareness to our town and to attract. Businesses and they accomplished that and, um, they decided to focus instead of on events to focus on projects. And so they, um, were successful with the alley project. Um, they did the patio there on Main Street and now they're looking at Landmark Park. Um, and that's still under discussion, but they're wanting to just keep doing improvements for the community.
Well, come on up. We thought maybe y'all missed us.
Stanis compliment, still live in Old Bridge Edition and the pole barn is still standing.
They're, they're in litigation right now, I guess.
Okay, now, I've heard, I've been told by several council members that the pole barn is going to come down. That we're waiting because the insurance claim hasn't actually been filed. But we've also been told that the town does have money set aside for when there is a claim. Help reimburse, we know that Jake, Jake wants some reimbursement for his money that he's already.
They're not even going after the town now. They're going after the builder.
Okay.
And what I'll do is I'll, I'll reach out to them.
Yeah.
If I got where they're at and I'll get back with you.
Please, because you know, we, I, we were gone for a couple of months, so I didn't come, uh, here, but, um. You know, we're looking at this thing and it even looks worse than it did before. You know, the wood is wearing, it's like. Come on, it, if it's gonna come down, let's get it down. That's all we're asking for. I, I don't know if anyone else. Has anything to say, but this has been going on now a long. So what, what is the next step? Just so we leave.
Jake was in here, I think, what was it, a month ago, two months ago? And they are taking the builder to court. What I'll do is I'll find out that, if they haven't moved on going to court. Then the town probably needs to act on it. It's been, um, uh, we need to start working.
And I, I mean this in all the right way, but we, we already went through this step before.
Right.
Because before Christmas. We said, we're gonna put some, I don't know, not sure, but we're gonna talk to Jake because he needs to move one way or the other. And he did, and we're in, no, nothing's changed.
Well, I mean, he went to, he, he got an attorney to file suit against the builder. It was his, it was, it was not that way before.
It hasn't changed anything, is my point.
Things don't move very fast.
I haven't been here probably since October, November, but y'all were gonna put some pressure on the situation.
Right.
It, it's been time. It, it has been time, that's all I'm gonna say.
And, uh, the, the legal process takes.
Oh, I, I've been through that, believe me, I've, I've worked in a lot of those areas, so I, I know what you're saying, but. It's been a long time, if you look at the notes, we've been, we've been around this bin quite a few times now, so. Uh, anything that you can do to say, hey, you know. What can be done if he's not getting any.
The thing, what we could do is we could find them, but there again, it might be another. Month, two months before the judge. Or, or Jake takes it down himself and then just lets it sit there and then, uh, he goes to court.
And that would be the best act, but if you're suing somebody, probably something says he can't touch you. He, well, but we don't know all those things, yeah. Okay, you, we're making assumptions there that we don't know. He can take it down and he can sue for his losses. He. Builder, okay? I mean, we have pictures of before and after, so I just think it's, it's time.
Now, council comments, Libby?
I don't have anything.
Tonya? No. Nope, I'm good too. Can I get a, uh, to approve the minutes to sign the vouchers?
Make a motion to sign vouchers.
A second.
All in favor? I oppose. Guys have it.
A second.
All in favor? Oh, wait a minute, come on. No, sorry. Hey, hey, we get moving. If you better have your hand, uh, we don't mess around.
We'll try to make it quick.
No, no, you're fine.
Thank you. My name's Andrew Newland and Jim and Pam Huber know everyone in this room. Um, but we're next door neighbors on North Leland and wanted to, uh, we've talked about planting trees. We're gonna plant a seed. In the council's mind about some street work on Leland Street. The.
Yeah, we've noticed those projects going on in town, um, several sidewalks have been replaced. Um, the sidewalks up on the end of Cleveland Street where we're at. Uh, whenever it rains, they're underwater and winter, that tends to be a problem.
What was the address on Leland?
Well, it's not just one address. My personal residence is at six one eight and.
Six.
All on the west side of Leland?
Yes, mostly on the. West side, but there's some issues on the east side as well. Really from Michigan up to Timber Ridge, it's. Occasional, um, but for me, the, the problem is. You know, Leland's the main thoroughfare, you know, to get down to Michigan Street for all the Timber Ridge residents and others as well. And because those sidewalks are underwater, people who are walking their dogs are walking in the middle of the street. People are parking their cars up on the sidewalk and it's safety concern that, I mean, there's a lot of traffic running through there and. I walk my dog and I'm walking in the middle of the street because there's water on both sides and. Jim and Pam parked out in a handicap spot. How are they supposed to get to their car? You know, when there's six feet or six feet. Six inches of water and I'm, I'm spry enough, I can jump over it to get to my car, but. You know.
No, we have been replacing a lot of sidewalks and repairing a lot of sidewalks.
Do some more sidewalk. Are we, what's the plan? Or do we use it all?
The way we do our paving is we, um. We have like a pavement maintenance, uh, schedule where we have to score each road in the condition that they're in. And what we do is we. We save up money for a couple of years to be a match. We go to their NDOT and ask for a grant. For the Community Crossings Matching Grant Fund. The most they will give is a million dollars, so that means we have to come up with three hundred and thirty-three dollar. Three hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars to, to, to meet that match. So we're using those paving funds. But it takes a couple of, two or three years to save up to leverage those state funds, so we can do that. Once we get those funds, they have to be applied to segment a street according to. The scoring of the condition of the road. And then if you tell them you're going from. That's all we can spend that money on. If we go somewhere else, then we owe that money back. They won't let us use those funds. We can't really use the, the money for sidewalks unless it's a street project. So if we get the funds to do all of Leland, we can include all the sidewalks with that, curbs, drain. Everything else that goes along with it. So that's, that's kind of the way that our paving process works. And the leveraging of the funds to try to, to make those dollars go further.
And what we've been, we, we do have a budget, what is it, fifty thousand?
Yeah.
Yeah, that we spend, but that's, uh, that now you're seeing where we're patching and repairing here and there. Let us go over and take a look and find out what the cost and what's left in that fifty grand.
Yeah, I'll have to see what's left on it. In the areas you see where we're doing the sidewalk patching, more likely there's getting ready to be a new street paved in front of that as well. Because that's funded. Yep.
So is it a, is it a road issue or a drainage issue?
Sidewalk.
Drain issue, the drains at the south side of my property, Leland Street. And the water from Hampton Street has to drain all the way down.
It's, it's the pools right there.
Probably runs down the sidewalk, isn't it?
Yeah.
Running down the sidewalk?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, there is no, there is a sidewalk, but it's not elevated, so it's really all kind of.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that, that road definitely needs some attention.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What's the, what's the process when it comes to like, we've shared some of the steps and how, how it works, what kind of. Things do people like us do to help encourage movement and these kinds of.
The scoring, I don't.
Talk to these people. No, I'm just kidding. Just bringing it up, I mean, this.
The, I mean, score based.
Yeah.
And I appreciate you guys coming in and you know, we'll make sure to look at it, a little heavier, um. You know, maybe the sidewalks. you know, maybe the sidewalks when we were looking at scoring the streets and stuff, we didn't really pay a lot of attention to the sidewalks. But since you bring that to our attention, that's something that we can, you know, maybe you look at and who knows, it might move it up to scale a little bit as far as scoring.
Thanks for your.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public comment before I all right. Can I get a motion uh, to uh, to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn at eight thirty. I second.
All in favor? I oppose. The eyes have it. Thank you.